I call the April 24th, 2018, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And I'll ask my colleagues on council stand for invocation as we have Reverend Ken and Frederick Walker of St. James Episcopal Church give our invocation. Thank you, sir. And that will be followed up with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Moody.
Let us listen to the words from the book of Ecclesiastes. What do workers gain from their tour? I have seen the burden God has laid on the human race. He has made everything beautiful in its time. He also set eternity in the human heart, yet no one can fathom what God has done from beginning till the end. I know that there is nothing better for people than to be happy and to do good while they live. That each of them may eat and drink and find satisfaction in all their tour. This is the gift of God. Know that everything God does will endure forever. Nothing can be added to it and nothing taken from it. God does it so that people will fear Him. Whatever is, has already been, and what would be, has been before. And God will call the past to account. Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves of people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought here for other men in kindreds and thongs. Indue with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to that law we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness; and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust indeed to fear. This we pray in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll ask my colleagues to participate in electronic roll call. Please hit your yes button to indicate that you're here. Madam Clerk, we have more than a forum.
Yes, sir.
Our next item of business, consideration of approval of minutes, and we'll do them as a batch. We have the minutes of a call meeting of April the 9th, 2018, the minutes of a call meeting of April the 10th, 2018, and the minutes of a regular meeting of April 19th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
It's my honor and privilege tonight to acknowledge the presence of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. In fact, one of the sisters is sitting up here, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. And thank you for attending, and thank you for all that you do to better our community. Would all the sisters of the Deltas please stand so we can acknowledge you?
Yes, please stand.
And invite Lisa Rogers, who's the president, to come to the lectern.
Greetings, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, and all the distinguished members of the council. My name is Lisa Rogers, and I am the president of Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Delta Sigma Theta is an organization of college-educated women committed to the constructive development of its members and public service with a primary focus on the black community. Portsmouth Alumni Chapter is proud to have served the Portsmouth community and the surrounding vicinity for more than 70 years, and will proudly celebrate our 75th year of sisterhood, scholarship, and service on December 21st of this year. The programs and initiatives that we have conducted over the past 70 years have been centered on the sorority's five-point programmatic thrust of economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. With long-running programs such as the Betty Shabazz Delta Academy, the Dr. Jean Noble Delta Gyms, and embody serving the needs of our young ladies and gentlemen in the community, and initiatives such as mental health forums, opioid awareness sessions, voter registration drives, candidates' forums, active shooter training, and many others serving the needs of the remainder, Portsmouth Alumni Chapter continues to position itself as an impactful force within the community. Our strategic partnerships with such municipal organizations as the Portsmouth Police, Behavioral Healthcare Services, and Fire Departments will aid us in educating and informing the citizens of Portsmouth on the benefits and resources available to foster a safer place for citizens to live, work, and play, something that is consistently becoming more important in today's political, socioeconomic, and social climate. The vision, principles, and mission established by our current council coincide with the vision and mission of the 22 college women who founded our illustrious organization on the campus of Howard University some 105 years ago. We seek to provide a safe living environment, gender and pay equality, and strong, competitive, and safe learning environments for our children. Let us continue to work together to forge a brighter future for generations to come. We would like to invite each of you to our Portsmouth Family Impact Day on June 3rd at IC Norcombe High School from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It is a free event of informative sessions, free mammograms for registered participants, and a community police relationship-building basketball game. We thank you so very much.
Thank you so very much. And again, thank you for everything that you do to greatly improve the quality of life in our community. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Yes, I would like to applaud my Sisters of Delta Sigma Theta for being present here tonight. Not only are we being visible in our community, but now we also taking part by coming to our city council meetings to be able to be informed. And one of the aspects of our five-point thrust, our social action, we have taken it to heart, where we have seven elected or appointed officials in our own chapter, starting with our state Senator El Louise Lucas, who appoints our Judge Roxy Holder. We have our Commonwealth attorney Stephanie Morales. We also have Councilwoman myself, Lisa Lucas Burke for Portsmouth, and Dr. Ella Ward in Chesapeake. And in Portsmouth, of course, we appoint our city manager, Dr. Patton, who appoints our chief of police, Tanya Chapton, all from our chapter.
Thank you, and thank you again for being here. Our next item is a budget presentation by the city manager, which we asked her to do last night at this point on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. Tonight's presentation is a city council report back on Portsmouth Public School trends. During the April 10th...
Dr. Patton?
Yes.
If you could just wait one second. Thank you.
During the April 10th city council meeting, city council requested that the city manager report back to you and review the budget strategic initiative education specifically highlighted in the Portsmouth Public Schools' performance data provided in the proposed FY 2019 budget located on page 1-5, and trends on city spending per pupil for education. The average daily membership, or ADM, for Portsmouth Public Schools has been on the decline. It has declined at an actualized rate of 1.2% for the past 18 years, and is projected to decline 1.9% for FY 2019. The city's local funding support has increased annually by 3.3% based on a five-year average. Although the city's local share increased over the five-year period, the average daily membership continues to decline at an average of 1.49%. City council, in your four big things from your retreat, you have remained laser-focused on education. One aspect to show your focus is to compare the local funding per pupil versus city operations per capita. As you can see from this chart, Portsmouth funding to Portsmouth Public Schools is double the rate of increase to city operations. Over the last 18 years, the local share to Portsmouth Public Schools has grown at an annual rate of 5.4% compared to 2.8% by city operations. The standards of quality, or SOQ, are the guidelines which the General Assembly allocates money to school divisions to provide quality education and instruction for students across the state. The SOQs are what is required for Virginia schools to meet minimum academic performance measurements and define what every school division must provide at least for its students and employees. The composite index represents a locality's ability to fund their share of education. Portsmouth possesses the lowest composite index within the region, and when compared to the benchmark urban localities, Portsmouth funds local education 147% above the required local standards of quality as determined by the Virginia Department of Education. Each year, the state calculates the amount of local operational funds required to meet the SOQ funding requirements based on March 31 ADM and the per-pupil amounts for each fiscal year. For the FY 2019 proposed budget, the required local effort as determined by the state is If the city were to only fund schools at this amount, per-pupil cost would be $1,795 per pupil. In the FY 2019 proposed budget that I presented on March 26th, I recommended $52.8 million, equating to a per-pupil cost of $3,992. If you look at the difference between what the state indicates is required, local effort for FY 2019, and what I proposed, the per-pupil cost is double the amount the city is required to pay based on the state's calculation, a difference of $2,196. When looking at the funding across categorical areas for Portsmouth Public Schools, the majority of funding received by the schools is allocated toward instruction, which is the highest among the comparative cities, and the lowest amongst allocation for administration. Based on the 2017-2018 teacher salary survey report issued by the Virginia Department of Education, Portsmouth leads with the highest average teacher salary among the urban cities in Hampton Roads. The average salary for teaching positions is up 9.51% over 2017. It is higher than the state average of $50,834, and higher than the average for all school divisions of $56,855. PPS is comparable to the number of teachers that holds masters and doctoral degrees and pupil teacher ratio. Portsmouth Public Schools ranks second among the comparative cities for fully accredited schools, and is comparable with promotion rate and the number of high school graduates continuing their education beyond obtaining their diploma. When we look at the SOL passing rate for all grades for reading, writing, history, social studies, math, and science, Portsmouth Public Schools is comparative with the other cities within the benchmarked area. Portsmouth School Trends Takeaways. Here are the takeaways from this presentation. City council continues to fund Portsmouth Public School as a top priority. Local funding growth outpaces the state. Local funding per pupil is twice the per capita funding for city operations. Schools' fundings are allocated efficiently across categories, and schools are performing competitively on SOLs when compared to our neighboring peers. This concludes my report, members of council. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Dr. Woodaker.
Yes, first of all, it's good to see so many out tonight. I know that there is a public hearing on education this evening pertaining to the budget for next year. I am greatly disturbed by the report that was just given. I take offense when persons try to play on the intelligence of others. That report that was just given, the information that was displayed to the public was greatly skewed. You have a council, a majority of council that's up here that is anti-education, and what you just saw presented to you is a disgrace. Those figures that you saw, most people in here don't even know the basis of how those figures were even derived. When you talk about a school district that has the level of poverty that is in our city, and then you start presenting information that we are funding our school district at a percentage higher than what the state is requiring, and most people in here aren't aware that the standard of quality is a minimum standard from the state, that because of poverty issues, we can't just fund our schools at a minimum level, we have to fund our schools to meet the needs of our children. That's how we fund our schools. We don't fund...
Ladies and gentlemen...
We don't fund our schools to meet the SOLs. The SOLs is a minimum standard. None of us in here celebrate reaching the minimum. We challenge our children to strive for the top. And when I see these figures presented tonight, it's disingenuous, because when a city manager comes up here and says that the funding for public schools per pupil is outpacing the funding for operations, what does that mean to us? Teachers need pay raises. That's not, that's not the issue of per-pupil funding compared to what is being paid per capita. That's not why we're here. We're here to make sure that our schools are funded properly, and I would challenge our citizens not to have your intelligence insulted like it just was, because the data that was presented, and anyone who deals with numbers knows that you can manipulate numbers to show whatever you want to show, and that's what just happened tonight. And of all school districts, Portsmouth, we have to be sensitive to making sure that we just don't throw anything at our children. Our children deserve the best teachers, the best janitors, the best secretaries. They deserve that, and we have the money to do it. It's a matter of whether we're going to put our priorities there. And so I'm not going to sit up here as an elected official, and I know there are a lot of people that are trying to silence my voice, but I will not be silent, because I know that this is a disservice, what was just presented to you. And whether your child is black or white, it doesn't matter. We're in the same boat together, because if our children are not given a quality education, we're going to pay for it either at the front end or at the back end. I recommend we do it at the front end and not listen to reports like this, because a majority of this council is anti-education, even though every one of them sitting up here benefited from an education. And so I'm not going to sit silent and allow you to see a report like this with misinformation given. I'm not going to let my intelligence be insulted, and I hope you will not let yours either.
Thank you. We have a series of public hearings coming up next, and the first public hearing is on our annual action plan. I will open that public hearing and then hear from the public, and after that, we'll close that public hearing. And then we have three separate budget-related public hearings. One on the operating budget, per se. I'll open that, hear from the public, and then close that after the last person speaks. And then a public hearing on the capital improvements plan as proposed by the city manager. Again, I'll open that public hearing, we'll hear comments from the public, and then close that public hearing. And the last public hearing is on the proposed real property tax increase. Again, I'll open that public hearing and hear from the public and close it. At this point, Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limited five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. And to the audience, as people speak, please be courteous. Do not boo, or jeer, or applaud, or show any type of outburst. If you need to stand, please go to the back of the council chamber so that people behind you, if you have a seat, can see. With that, we'll open the first public hearing, and that is on the annual action plan, which is a plan that's required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We'll open the public hearing for comments on that action plan only. This is not a public hearing on the budget. So with that, the, I'll open the public hearing on the annual action plan. If you desire to speak either for or against, or anyway, please come to the lectern and state your name and your address. Again, this is on the annual action plan. Any speakers, any person in the audience desire to speak on the annual action plan? Hearing none? I close this public hearing. That's item 18155. We'll now move to agenda item 18156A, and this is a public hearing on the proposed annual operating budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Please limit your comments to the annual operating budget. If you want to make comments on the capital budget, that will be the next public hearing. And so with that, we have some registered speakers, and I'll open the public hearing. And the first registered speaker is Ian Robinson. Sir, you have five minutes. If you'll come to the lectern and state your name and address, please.
Thank you. How y'all doing tonight? My name's Ian Robinson, 5 Woody Pines Crescent, Portsmouth, Virginia, P-Town, born and raised. Good evening, city council members, Mayor Rowe, everyone in attendance. My name's Ian Robinson. I'm a senior at Churchill High School, come up through Portsmouth Public School system. I'm in a bunch of clubs, a bunch of leadership positions. I work for the Portsmouth City School Board as a student representative. I'm here to represent all the students of Portsmouth. Portsmouth Public Schools, Portsmouth Public Schools has amazing athletes. We have outstanding students in general in STEM, arts, and English, math, anything, any area. Students from Portsmouth City Schools have excelled, and honestly, that is because of the amazing work that we do in our schools, and I want to keep that amazing work happening in our schools. I feel that if it's the city council's pleasure, you guys should find some more money for our schools, because our students do deserve the best, as Dr. Wicker said. Our students should be able to be given this amazing opportunity for an education. We can't just, you know, children are our future. We can't let them go out through our schools and not get the education they need, not get the experience they need. You're going to send them out into the world not knowing enough, knowing the wrong things. We need our schools to be not just at par with what the minimum is, not at par with everyone else. We need to be better. We need to be going above and beyond for our students and our schools, you know, and not just our students. You know, you know, teachers, the teachers in Portsmouth Public Schools are the most hard-working, caring, and devoted individuals I have ever met, and I'm totally biased on that, but I still stand by it. I have friends that are teachers. I have relationships that have gone beyond the classroom. I have teachers that talk to me and say, "How you doing, Ian? Are you okay? Do you help in any other classes? Are you okay at home? Anything going on?" These teachers care about their students, not just the SOL scores. They care about the well-being of their students, and, you know, who all know, the school board proposed a budget that offers our teachers a raise, 2% raise. I personally believe that they deserve a 5% raise. That's a little hefty, you know? If you guys could find any type of money to give to our teachers, to keep them in Portsmouth, to keep them teaching our students the way they are right now, to let them go above and beyond, to give our students the education they need, give them the relationships they need to do better in life and reach their full potential. We need to keep our schools great, and we need to make them better. We need to keep our schools great, and we need to make them better so that the city of Portsmouth and the state of Virginia can benefit from the people that are coming out of our schools. So if you guys can find any type of money, I know, I have a feeling that you have it, you know? But if you could allocate all the money, just give as much money as you can to our schools. I'd definitely benefit from it. I don't know how many of you have come up through Portsmouth, but I know I am going to do, I would like to think that I'm going to do great things because of the education I received here from the way Portsmouth has raised me. So if you want more students like my amazing self to come, to come out of our city and out of our schools, I strongly implore you to, to give our schools some more money. So thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Christian Baker, and you have five minutes.
All right, hello. I am Christian Baker, and I am a student at Waters Middle School. I grew up in Portsmouth. Thank you for having me to speak, and thank you, Dr. Bracy, for the opportunity. Today I come to you guys for the, because we have some concerns about our school's security. In the front of our schools, there is one metal detector, and on that metal detector, it isn't pushed back up against the door, so people walk around it. And when people do walk through it, and it does go off, it, it, there's nobody there to wind the, wind the person it went off on. And so some solutions that we have two metal, two metal detectors at the front so that when people walk in, they can't walk around the metal detectors. And, and security guards so that they can wind the person who it went, the metal detector went off on, so they can wind them down. And we also have some concerns about when parents pick up their students. We, there's a machine called a Raptor, and it scans the parents' IDs, make sure they're not on any criminal records while, while they pick up their students. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak, and have a nice night.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Mr. Baker? You might want to have your parents show you tomorrow on the internet or on Channel 48 on Cox Television. Just earlier tonight, in our 5:00 work session, the manager gave us a detailed description of what the $1 million that is going to be appropriated later tonight, if we vote yes, and I think we will, for school security. And part of that is that Raptor system and a whole cadre list of things that include everything you just said.
Thank you. The next speaker is Taylene Mack. And sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, council, for having me, and thank you, Dr. Bracy, for inviting me. I would like to say I agree with Christian. We do need a Raptor and metal detectors, but my solution to that is we need metal detectors on the bus ramp as well, because on Hall B at Waters Middle School, there are no metal detectors, and most of the students come through there. We also need guards there to wind the person if the metal detector does go off and want to direct the students to go to class. Again, like Christian said, we need a Raptor to make sure we don't have any criminals in our school so we can be safe. I care very much about my classmates and the students at Waters and in Portsmouth, and I don't want them to get harmed or hurt. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jean Shackleford, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, I appreciate.
Ms. Shackleford, will you hold on?
Appreciate the comments from the two young men pertaining to public safety. I would encourage the parents and all of those that are here that we not be distracted by the public safety issue and forget about the school instructional funding issue with the teachers as well as all employees. If you can find a million for public safety, you can also find that money to pay our employees in the school district.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Shackleford, you have five minutes.
My name is Jean Shackleford. I live at 2437 Sterling Point Drive. I've been there for quite a while, and I've been here many times before. It usually is around budget time, and so here I am, back again tonight. I know that some of you wholeheartedly support education, and I know that some of you do not wholeheartedly support education. Some of you support it sort of. I'm asking tonight that all of you support public education in this city in the best way that this city can possibly do. You need to give our employees a 2% raise. Look around you. The school divisions around you are doing 2% and 3% and 4%. And yet you have told the council, you have told the school board to dig around in their budget and find the money to give the employees a raise. How unfair is that to our employees who serve this school system and these thousands of children every day? I ask you to be diligent as you look for the $2.1 million that will fund the 2% raise. I noted that there were $400,000 more in the budget when the city manager gave the report tonight, but that is not enough, folks. That only is just a little drop in the pot. So I beg you to all support the education of the children in this city. I come to you with heart because I worked in this school system for 35 years. I served on the school board for eight years, and I will never, ever turn my back on this city and this school board and this, and the public schools in this city. I don't know that you know this figure, but I'm going to throw it out to you. Did you know that there were 49 positions in our, in our schools this year that had substitute teachers? Some of them were fully accredited, but many of them were not. Is this the kind of education that we want for our children? I can't believe that you could sit there and be elected by the people in back of me and say, "What we've given you is enough." As I leave the podium tonight, I ask you to be diligent in your efforts for all of public education, and I know that you have, and I'm not going to speak to that because it's not the time to do it, but I know that you have already given other monies for other programs for safety and for public, for capital improvement. So look around, find the money, fund the employees as they should be, and they will thank you, and I will also.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Sylvester Askins. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sylvester Askins. I live at 942A Chumley Road in Portsmouth.
Sir, will you speak in the microphone?
I'm here to represent the Independent Center. ECI has been serving people with disabilities and working with local governments, including the city of Portsmouth, for 34 years. ECI is the only organization in Southampton Roads that provides independent living services which are based on the consumer-directed model. The model incorporates peer mentors and allows people with disabilities to receive services from other people with disabilities who have had to resolve some of the same issues in their own lives. ECI will work with Portsmouth residents who have disabilities to provide them with core services including the following: peer mentoring and counseling, independent living skills training, individual advocacy, housing counseling and placement, and information and referral. These services are designed to ensure that the person has the tools they need to help themselves and to be as self-sufficient as possible to achieve greater quality of life. We will work with a minimum of 100 unduplicated people with disabilities residing in Portsmouth, and they will receive the services just as I just named. We thank you for your prior support, and we hope that you will continue to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Juanita Jones, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, other members of the council. My name is Juanita Jones, and I'm a resident of Portsmouth. I'm also the president of the Portsmouth Education Association. The goals of PEA is to promote, improve, create the interest and the generate benefits or to advance the status of the education profession, create good community relationships between members of the education profession, students, parents, and the community, increase competency in education profession by training, continue education, and by other means designed to advance the welfare of members of this profession. The members of our profession are virtually important part of the functioning society. I came before you on April the 10th, and last I asked is what you're going to do? During that time, Suffer has improved the incentive of their education professor, and I asked you, "What are you going to do?" Newport News and Chesapeake had offered their education professions 4% raise to show that they are valued of their work. How important are we, the education, in all aspects of the word, teachers, private professions, custodians, bus drivers, food services, office associates, guidance counselors, nurses, operations? In all honesty, we have been nickel and dime for years. We need to get enough pay, not just for health care, but for our families. But before you answer that question, think about this. How far do you think you would have been had not you received that education? Where would you have been if you did not have the teacher that took the time, his or her time, to teach you? Would you be sitting there, sitting high and looking low on us? Now ask yourself, where would you have been if you didn't have the love of a teacher to teach and care for your children, your nieces, nephews, cousins, and all other family members? Without those collaborations of your, for your children, where would you have been? Where would you be today if not for the guidance and dedication of those education mentioned above? Now, tell us, Dr. Patton, you asked the city employees to give you a little more time so you could find a bonus for them. Well, how about us? We, the employees of Portsmouth Public Schools, you need to give us a little bit more time to find the resources that allow us to live at least somewhat comfortably. City council members, when you see us working second jobs and you have the nerve to ask, "How long you been working here?" And we want so long to tell you, "Long enough to make ends meet." We would like to go home to our families too after a long day of work, but don't have to worry, because you can do that, and we can. Evidently, you don't care about our worth. You usually come here, we usually come here asking for 2%, but tonight, we are requesting at 3.5%. There are multiplicity of needs in the Portsmouth Public Schools, and we would deal with those needs with Dr. Bracy in our regular meeting. Tonight, we want to focus on our budget concerns, increasing the pay of this community of educators, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, nurses, counselors, secretaries, private professions, and teachers. Ladies and gentlemen of the Portsmouth City Council, do right by us, and we will ensure a productive, cohesive, less volatile society, and you will also assist in the continuation of a long partnership between city council, school board administration, and all education of the Portsmouth Public Schools. So what are you going to do? What are you going to do by us? And I'd like to ask all, all Portsmouth educations, members to stand, all Portsmouth Public Schools employees to stand, all people have been benefit by Portsmouth Public Schools to please And on that note, I too like to thank you, Dr. Whitaker, because I had just ran some numbers, and they were not the numbers that I came up with. Not only did I run the numbers for here, but I would too lobby in the state, and I lobby in Richmond. So I asked questions, and what was presented tonight was a falsehood.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is Garland Alexander. And ma'am, Mr. Alexander, before you come up, Dr. Whitaker's asked for the floor. Sir, you have the floor.
Ms. Jones, I stood because you asked all of those who have benefited from Portsmouth Public Schools, and I definitely have. There is a figure that was not presented when Dr. Patton presented the trend information that I think the citizens need to also be aware of. And that is, over a 10-year period from 2008 to 2017, it was reported to us yesterday in our public work session by our financial advisors that over that period of time, total general revenues in the city increased by $16,736,508. That's approximately $17 million. In that same report, it showed over that 10-year period, the amount that the school system had received, and that's approximately $2.5 million. That's not keeping pace with the increase in revenues that we're seeing in the city. The money is there, it's a matter of where we're going to put our priorities.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Alexander, you have five minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, please act appropriately.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, council members. I'm representing the retired police and fire association. My name is Garland Alexander. I live at 2913 Tanbark Lane, Portsmouth, Virginia. I want to address the 2018, 19-year budget. As it relates to the public safety retirees' cost of living rates, I am requesting that, requesting for the 2019 budget year $75 a month for police and fire retirees' system effective July 1 of 2018. And is this across-the-board amount, amounts to $17.30 a week? We have, we haven't had a COLAR in three years. This will be immediate help to widers or widers making $10,000 a year. Some of our widers are faced with buying food or medicine. Each time we ask for a COLAR, the response, "Wait until the next year." The manager and council has chosen to give retirees and widers and widers bonuses instead of a raise, pay raise, which is appreciated greatly. But this only helps for one year. Several of the council members have said, "Wait another year." All four of, of the, all four of the council members who ran in the past election asked for our support, which we, which they received. Now we are asking for your support on this request. We feel we have waited long enough. Mayor Rowe, you told us during a meeting, we had with you, if you, if we could identify funding source, you would support the $75 a month. The amount, the amount approximately of $460,000, the amount to approximately, which amounts to about approximately $460,000 for approximately 511 retirees in police and fire. In the present, in the presentation of the finance overview presented by Davenport Company last night on the general fund balance, on page 21, there is $827,842 difference in the proposed the proposed unassigned fund balance for 2019 at 21%. This is more than enough to fund our requests. I will glad, gladly answer any questions you may have. We realize that you do not like using the reserve fund for reoccurring expenses. There are other ways to address this, for instance, using some of the 2.5 million for the golf fund, which is non-reoccurring expenses. If you, if you are, if you use Davenport's recommendation of 18% of budget instead of the 21%, there would be $8 million of unusable funds. We also support the school board's request for teachers' pay. This will keep attend, keep and attract qualified teachers and make significant investments in our students, which are our future. I am asking for everyone who agrees with my remarks to please stand. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. And our next speaker is Shannon Glover. And sir, you've got five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of City Council. My name is Shannon Glover, and I live at 4113 Pendleton Road in the City of Portsmouth. I've been listening to our speakers tonight, and I'm glad that I'm, first of all, the only business owner here that has approached you all to talk about funding our teacher raises. You know, I know as a business owner, sometimes you, I have to make difficult decisions. And at this point, having looked at all the information that I've reviewed, this is a point in which you all have to make a difficult decision. And we must make this difficult decision to retain and attract talented teachers. Now, when I think about how we arrive at this decision, I think about a partnership. And in a partnership, sometimes you ask some to give things and others to get things, but you try to balance it out. In this particular partnership, this story has been done before. For example, last year, when the schools came before council, it was a similar situation. But in order for the partnership to work, I think the schools did something in very much good faith. In order for their employees to get the raise, they cut 15 full-time positions. They also closed Emily Spong Preschool Center. They decided not to be able to take the children to the children's museum to be able to enjoy the planetarium. Those were good-faith efforts made by our educators. Now, progress doesn't happen by accident. It is the result of the efforts of committed educators who are asked to fill many roles in the lives of our children on a day-to-day basis. You just heard from our, our city manager that we are making progress in terms of our accreditation and other areas. Our teachers, however, are asked on a daily basis to provide more services, to be more to their students, to be a teacher, to be a caregiver, to be a person that looks after many of their needs. And at the same time, we are asking them as leaders to do more with less. In our city, education should be and is the number-one priority. I can tell you, if you want to attract businesses and others to come to our city, we had better make sure that they understand where our focus is as it relates to education. I understand your predicament, I really do. But at the end of the day, if we value education, we cannot continue to pay lip service to it. We have to put the money where the money needs to be put, and I suggest to you, and I ask you, to support our teachers and fund this 2% raise, because at the end of the day, it's gonna cost us more in the long run, when we lose these talented folks, and we have to start all over again. Our children lose, our teacher lose, our teachers lose, and most importantly, I think our community loses. And lastly, I want to say, I'm a product of public education. My mom raised six kids, okay? And the reality is, I would not be here. I would not have finished college, I would not have opened up my own company if it weren't for a teacher. And I submit to you as a consideration, when you talk to everybody in this room, I know Garland just came up and talked about the firefighters. Guess what, folks? Without competent, talented, quality teachers, we don't have police, we don't have firefighters. In fact, again, we don't have you. So, if you understand the big picture, which I think you all do, I certainly hope that you will agree to fund education and fund the 2% raise. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. This concludes our registered speakers. We'll continue now with anybody that wants to speak on the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. This is a public hearing on the operating budget. Please come to the lectern. You'll have five minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Rowe, City Council. My name is Tanaya Bellamy, 27, After Park Way. I am a junior at Woodrow Wilson High School. I participate in several clubs, FCCLA, Key Club, and YADAP. Just recently, my teacher, Ms. Roberts, if she would stand, she accompanied me to Maryland, where I was inducted as Lieutenant Governor for Capitol District of Key Club. A lot of the things I do and the leadership positions that I'm in have all been because my teachers and my advisors have helped me, and they've pushed me and motivated me to do certain things. My teacher, Ms. Roberts, for example, she runs FCCLA and Key Club at Wilson. She does a lot for me and a lot of the other students at Wilson. Without her, we probably wouldn't go and travel and do a lot of the things that we do. Every time I need something, or I'm scared, or I'm in doubt, or I just need a pep talk, Ms. Roberts has been there. I know that in a lot of the schools in Portsmouth, they have Ms. Roberts, a teacher who generally cares and wants the best for their students and teachers who just want to help. I think that if teachers don't get the raises that they're asking for, they're gonna go and they're gonna find them in other cities, and Portsmouth is going to be without, and the children are gonna suffer. All of you have been through elementary and middle school and high school. You've graduated, and that's all because a teacher was there to help you. They may have bumped your grade for something, or they've may just been there when you needed a friend or you needed something. If we don't have that in Portsmouth, there is gonna be no Portsmouth, because nobody's gonna wanna be here. It's not gonna be a thriving community like it should be. I hope that one of you, all of you, can look and find somewhere in the budget to pull some money to give our teachers and staff a raise. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Please, no applause. This is a public hearing on the operating budget for 1819. Please come to the lectern if you want to speak and state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is James Sherwarta. I live at 903 Bowling Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia. I have been a teacher in Portsmouth Public Schools for 12 years. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve Portsmouth. Most recently, two weeks ago, I was named the Division Teacher of the Year, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my colleagues behind me. It's, it's an honor to be named Teacher of the Year, but I don't really know that I fully deserve it, because I look around at my colleagues and, and they, they work just as hard, if not harder, than I do. We arrive to school at 7:30 in the morning, though I'm not contracted to be there till 8:45. We hold many different hats in our schools. I can speak for myself, I'm the school data analyst, which means I do data for PBS, PBIS. I do data for all of the testing. I do data for disciplinary actions in the school, anything and everything. I serve as the patrols, I'm the school improvement co-chair, I'm on the principal's cabinet, and the school leadership team. And this is not unique to me. Most of my colleagues hold dual roles, and we do it on our time, because we care and we love our students. When I was named Teacher of the Year, I told, and I spoke about love for education, and I spoke that I would spread the message that we are not failing. The only thing that I can agree with, with Dr. Patton's presentation, is that we are not failing. We are comparable to our area schools. However, those numbers are skewed, and I know very little about all of the funding that goes into public education, but I know that the standards of quality are the minimum. And if we operate there, we are in very poor shape. I don't know that a school system does do that. We are asking for a 2% raise, but we deserve so much more. We have been told over and over and over again, wait, wait, the economy, it's bad. You're lucky to have a job, we've been told. And we are, and we have the best job. However, it's time to show your appreciation for teachers. We are saving lives. As public servants, we wake up in the middle of the night hoping and praying that we are enough. And often, we don't feel that way. We touch lives every day. We save lives every day. I can testify that, because teachers touched me in public education. I come from a dysfunctional family. My mother recently passed away of a heroin addiction. Teachers saved me. When I did not believe in myself, they believed in me. One of my other responsibilities is I get to interview future teachers in Portsmouth. Year after year, it is harder to find people to fill those positions, and any administrator behind me will tell you the same thing. They are not coming to Portsmouth because we are not earning money comparable to others. We need good, quality teachers for our children in Portsmouth. On a personal note, I rent a room from a retired teacher, because it's all I can afford right now. My daughter, a student in Portsmouth Public Schools, sleeps on a couch in my one room while I work to make ends meet. That is sad. It's an embarrassment as a father. And it's not fair. We save lives.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Please, no applause. Sir, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Barry Randall, Prentice Park Section of Portsmouth. Rhetorical question real quick, Mayor Rowe. When the deltas came up, we applauded them. So was that inappropriate behavior then, or was it inappropriate because we're here advocating for something that obviously you are against? To my brother that just spoke, my heart goes out to you, because many people don't understand what people go through. I'm looking around, I wasn't gonna speak, but wherever there's an injustice, I'm going to speak up. I'm trying to figure out what type of society that we live in. Do we not have anyone left in Portsmouth with integrity? You know, I know Dr. Patton is trying to make it to June, so she'll be vested. But I'm trying to figure out, where's her integrity? That broke me down more than anything I've heard tonight in this room, because I would have thought that an African-American woman, as highly educated as she is, and the voice that I used to listen to on 103 Jams as a child in Portsmouth Public Schools, would have had more integrity than to get up and pander to the majority of the council members. How do I know this? Because she walked out of here. I don't care what excuse you all give as to why she had to leave early tonight, but she knew the only people that would have had a question were the council members that is not in favor of this. She knew those that she answered to was not going to question her. Many of you all called me last year, you texted me last year, you gave me false information. The school division has $17 million that they can use, Barry Randall. Why do they need more money? And I was right there with you, because I believed the fake news. When you knew in your heart that these school board members were not allowed to touch that money, other than what it was allocated for. And tonight, I'm looking because I'm saying to myself, how is it that we have little children have to come up here and ask our council members to do what is right? Anna Lay is here tonight from the pilot, she can testify to this. In 2014, what did the paper say? Portsmouth Public Schools, 10 schools will be accredited. What did the paper say in 2016? Portsmouth Public School is going to dip. Only eight schools will be accredited. So we love to hear negative stuff, but now that we have upwards of 12 schools and a few other schools that are partially accredited, nobody's saying anything. So if you all are really, who, who takes the time to create a presentation to tell us why you shouldn't help public education? Who does that? I'm sitting back looking, because I hear everybody's talking, but let me play devil's advocate. Let's say, under Dr. Brace's leadership, our school division hasn't turned around like it has. If our schools were doing poorly, are you saying that our crossing guards don't deserve a raise because the schools are doing poorly? Are you saying the janitors, who are cleaning up throw-up, and cleaning up toilets, don't deserve a raise because the schools are doing poorly? I've watched many of you all in here, you throw your shawls on, your coats, because you get cold. Many of you all could not even be a crossing guard for one day. Our superintendent is here today, he can testify to this if I'm wrong. I believe you need at least 40 college credits to be a substitute teacher. You all like to take pictures and do wonderful things. I saw many of you all at the teacher award thing while you was there, I have no clue. But shadow them, trade places for a day, let's do that for, for a day. Be a substitute teacher for one day in the elementary level, and see if you won't come back and then say that everyone need the raise. In my conclusion, I'm gonna take my seat. I want to ask each council member this, because I asked administrators, I asked bus drivers to watch the council meeting on tomorrow. You can disrespect us and be silent, as you normally are, because you need us when we elect you, but after we elect you, you do your own thing. You don't have money, but you write $100,000 to study about feeding, poverty, and homelessness. You write a check about $450,000 for the gateway. All this foolishness. But Councilman Ray Smith, are you pro-education or anti-education? You don't have to give us a dissertation. When I sit down, you can answer. Councilman Bill Moody, are you pro-education, public education, or anti? Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Ver, are you pro-public education or anti-public education? Mayor John Rowe, are you pro-public education or anti-public education? Vice Mayor Elizabeth Simmons, are you pro-public education or are you anti-public education? Councilman Dr. Mark Whitaker, are you pro-education or are you anti-public education?
My record speaks for itself, and you know I'm pro.
And Councilman Nathan Klopp, no disrespect to you, I didn't even ask you, because we all know that you vote the way they tell you to vote.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Lori Wood. I live at 2421 Drum Creek Road in Chesapeake, Virginia. I'm a second-year English teacher in the Portsmouth Public Schools. My son goes to Chesapeake Public Schools, because any good parent, you want to put your kid in the best accredited schools you can. Having said that, how can anybody that has Portsmouth children put their children in an accredited school if you don't have the teachers to make it accredited? It's not gonna happen. Two students came up here tonight that are my students in my English class. No, they didn't talk to you about the budget, they talked to you about school safety. That's what's important to them. The reason they came to talk to you, it was a teaching moment in my class. I try to be creative with everything I do with my students. There are students here now supporting their fellow students that came up here, because they were in a class where we they were in a class where we decided to have a teaching moment. We took persuasive writing and we said, let's do persuasive speech. Their bathroom pass got taken away. It was a horseshoe. Considered a weapon because it's too hard. They didn't agree. Nothing ever happened with that horseshoe. They wanted it back. I said, well, you know, let's do a teaching moment. Let's do persuasion. So we called in the assistant principal. We did persuasion. They got their horseshoe back. Step forward to the school walkouts. I tried to explain to the students, walkouts are great. Sure, show your solidarity, but you don't affect change through doing a walkout and missing school. You affect change by coming to the school board. That one class said, Mrs. Wood, how do we do that? Can we do that? And I said, sure, let's figure it out. Teaching moment. And so we wrote to Dr. Bracy and we requested that our entire class come and talk to you. Dr. Bracy, being the supportive person he is, came to our class and listened to our class presentation. And of those efforts, he invited two students to come and talk to you. That's why they were there here tonight to talk to you. And that's pretty brave of two kids that are only 12 years old. And how do you think they did that? Because a second-year English teacher in Portsmouth wanted to do a teaching moment with those kids. I'm not going to quit on Portsmouth. I could go to Chesapeake. I could go to Suffolk. I could go to Rhode Island. I could go anywhere. But I love the kids that I teach in Portsmouth. And they deserve a lot better than what they've been getting. I'm appalled at my first time coming here and I hear that some of you are not so much into education. How can you do that? How are we going to replace you when you decide to retire if our children can't read, can't write, can't punctuate, and can't speak before you? So please, 2%? Yeah, that's great. But show people that education is valuable to you and do a 3.5. Just remember, those that replace you, you want to be proud of those people. And you want to be proud that you had a part in that. Thank you for listening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Next speaker. Ma'am, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address.
My name is Donna Clifton, 2301 Palmer Street, Portsmouth, Virginia 23704. I stand before you today as a representative of the Portsmouth Council of PTAs as their council president over all of the PTAs in Portsmouth. I stand before you today as a substitute teacher for the Portsmouth Public Schools system. And I stand today before you as a parent of a sixth grader at Churchill and Academy Elementary School. So I am threefold. I've sat through numerous speakers tonight, and I just feel like saying, let the church say amen. And I say that because everybody has sung from the same hymnal, pretty much singing the same sermon, and pretty much saying the same thing. And that thing is simple. All we want is a little more funding. That's all we're asking for. We're not asking for you to take every ounce of dime that you have and put it all in Portsmouth Public Schools. We're simply saying, as I said the last time we had this meeting, that our children deserve the best. If I take you down memory lane, you were once in school. You had a teacher that sowed a seed. And then you had more teachers to sow more seeds. And now look at you today. Here you are, a political figure in the city of Portsmouth. How are our kids going to become citizens like you? How are our kids going to become politicians like you if we don't have the teachers teaching? As a substitute teacher, I count myself very astute and very highly intellectual to go into a classroom and teach proficiently and continue the learning. However, I'm not certified in the SOL courses to make sure that our kids get what they need. But if our teachers are not here to teach us because you're not paying them and they're going to other divisions, then that means me, a substitute teacher, has to go in and try to deal with the discipline, try to deal with the curriculum, try to deal with the agenda that I haven't been trained to do. But I'm there because we don't need an empty seat and we don't need just anybody coming into our classrooms. We need our certified teachers who went to school to teach, to come into the classrooms, teach our children to the best of their ability, and make our kids the best kids that we can have in this city of Portsmouth. As a parent, I'm real concerned. I'm real concerned for my sixth grader to go to middle school here in Portsmouth. I've heard a lot of our parents in PTA saying they want to take their kids to other divisions. I've seen a lot of my son's new teachers leave the very next year because of the things that are going on here and they're offering more in other cities. Why do we want to send our kids to other cities? Why do we want all these fabulous, exceptional teachers to leave Portsmouth? For what? What are we doing? We're not asking you for a trillion dollars. We're simply asking you for a measly 2%, 3%, a few more millions that I don't think will hurt you. I'm like the gentleman before. I was appalled when they said some of you were not for education. I could not believe that. I applaud you for coming to our event on next week. Thank you, Mayor, for coming to our PTA end-of-year banquet so you can see what we do as a PTA. But I would rather you come and give us what we need for our school system. Our school system needs to flourish. And in my closing, I'd just like to say this. What do you think would happen if all the teachers decided they would not come to teach? If they totally just walked out and said, you know what? You don't give us the raise, we're done. If our teachers didn't come to teach, our children would be lost. If our children are lost, then our graduation rate would suffer. Our SOLs would suffer. If our SOLs graduation rates suffer, then we won't build leaders. If we don't build leaders, then our city won't develop economically. If our city don't develop economically, then the ripple effect will continue, and then we would not be a good city to bring any new economic developments to this city. So I implore you, for this last final time, give us what we need. Yes, our school system has already done enough, but we can't do it without you. We're supposed to be partners. We're supposed to be one team, one voice. Let's join together as a team and make it happen for this city. And let's change the way we view this city. And let's be one fine Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. This is a public hearing on the proposed 2018-2019 operating budget. If you'd like to speak, please come to the lectern, state your name and address, please. And you have five minutes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Tanisha Ma. My address is 1413 Holt Drive. And this is actually my first council meeting. And I am highly, I don't even know what to say in reference to education. Nobody in here taught themselves. Nobody. Your mother or father were your first teacher. If you have no respect for a teacher who can groom you, who can show you what's right and what's wrong, then we have made very poor decisions in choosing you. Teachers are everything, and they're not just always in the school. Someone has taught you to sit where you are, but there should be no judgment. So they deserve their 2%, 3%. My mother was a teacher, my sister, my aunt, plenty of people who are in my life taught me. And I just don't understand how that cannot be something that is important here. It's not about the dollars. If someone took your 2%, 2.0% or your 3.5%, how would you feel? Would you want to keep coming to work every day to do what you do? That is sickening. And my son, I had no intention of coming up here, but for my son to see grown folks behaving badly in a high position about education, I can't sit back and not say anything. You have a responsibility to make where you live great. And if you're not sowing into your children who are coming up and making sure that they have everything that they need in order to live as good citizens and be effective, then you are doing yourself, your next generation, the generation after that, a great injustice. So I'm not going to sit here and say, reflect on and look back. You've had a teacher. Every last one of you. Everybody here has had a teacher. If you've had a teacher, raise your hand. Everybody has had a teacher, whether they like them or not. There has been one or two who patted you on your back, who made you who you are, who just told you, you can do it, keep pushing yourself. So to give them what they need is probably still not enough. They still don't have the resources. They don't have the boards that they need. Because I am one of those who started out in Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, to send my child because I was terrified at the way the school was going. I was so terrified that they didn't even have an honors class at my son's school that I talked to the superintendent in reference to it. He is entitled to grow up, to have doctor before his name, just like everybody else. But if he is not sown into at an early age, then he's not going to know or have those opportunities. Give these children the same or a better opportunity. We have almost lived our full life. Some of us are a little bit closer to the end than others. But we need to make sure that these children, wherever they go, if they go to California, if they go to New York, that they represent this little city in Virginia called Portsmouth, Virginia, because they had an excellent education.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. This is a public hearing on the operating budget. Sir, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jensen Larnell Gilbert Baker. I live at 504 Chandler Hopper Drive. I came here this evening to support my son, Christian. And I had no idea that this feeling that I have about my city, that I would hear some of the things that I've heard. First of all, I cannot believe that anyone that's sitting up there is anti-education. I can't believe it. I mean, that's just my heart. I'm probably the only individual in this room that went from the first grade through the 12th grade without missing a day out of school in Portsmouth, Virginia.
And me.
And I just could not hold that. I couldn't hold it. I'm not bragging. But I love my city. And I came here from Detroit in '79. And when I graduated from Hampton, I went to Detroit and I came back, stayed there for 10 years. And I love my city. I lived in Virginia Beach, came back to Portsmouth. Lived in the Chesapeake, came back to Portsmouth. I got married. My wife doesn't understand Portsmouth. She's from Connecticut, Milford, Connecticut. She doesn't understand Portsmouth. But she says, baby, if you want to live in Portsmouth, that's where we live. And I have great coworkers that I work with. And I was talking to Dr. Bracy coming down in the elevator. I said, oh, tonight, they're going to talk about the budget. That's not why I'm here. But we deserve it. I mean, my wife can choke the eyes out of George Washington on a dollar bill. The raise, I'd probably give it away if it wasn't for her. But we have some great people that I have worked with. And I'm just saying, we deserve it. I'm at New Directions. For five years, I looked at newspaper articles of kids that have gotten shot, been in prison, or robbed people, or whatever. And all of them have been through me one way or another. And we have great teachers at New Directions that are trying to make a difference. So if 2% is there, I think we deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Five minutes, please. And ma'am, please state your name and address.
My name is Contral Devon. I'm a resident of Portsmouth, and I live in the Newport community. I came here to support students that I work with. I'm on the security team at Waters Middle School. And when I tell you the students, I'm so proud of them because they came, they stood their ground, they was excited about what they had done, they had worked on it. But I do know you all recognize that's outside of an SOL testing, which means Ms. Wood went above and beyond to assist her students. And we talked about having church. Many times, the teachers in our middle schools where I am and across the board, all of our public schools, there were multiple heads. I call them pastors. Because they have to try to teach and they weigh on a very sensitive, vital seesaw. Because you can't lose a student who's emotional because maybe his home life is going through or her home life is destroyed. Those are the things that's not considered when you look at the teachers. You can play with numbers all day long, but until you get in the trenches and start working with these students, you will not fully be able to understand. You will not fully be able to understand. And that's why some of you sit here as elected officials because the citizens, some representing even tonight, did not understand that you truly did not care about voting correctly when it came to funding our public schools. Because every time, and I have not been in the chambers any while, it's always the children that brings an issue. Public recreation, still an issue. Public education is still an issue. Vice Mayor, I know you support the police department. I know you support the firefighters. I know you do as well, Clark. However, our teachers, they're the first responders. If they cannot plant seeds, if they cannot teach them how to live in a governing body, which is the school, then our police department is going to struggle. It's not fair to subject children to have policemen to come into their schools to do programs with them so our other agencies will look great and then not award the teachers who promote that. It's not fair for you all to show up, take the pictures, and then get behind the scenes and do not push, do not push to fund these teachers. So you go to these events, but how do you know how many honor roll students we have? Where are you there? We have our sporting events. They make our name great when we win championships. But what about the students who make honor roll? What about those teachers? It's not enough to support them for Teacher of the Year events. We are tired of the fluff. I told you when I first came to council, I can pat myself on the head. We need people that's going to stand with these teachers, vote correctly, and figure it out. It's not fair every year that this is an issue. A robust city for who? That's something to think about. Who are we building this city for? They're talking about building two juvenile prisons. Come on, people, really? But we can't fund our schools? Stand behind the teachers. They are the first responders to any child's life. We can't blame the parents and not look at the way we vote. If the parents are lacking, then where do we pick up the pieces as a community? It has to be the schools. Otherwise, we all lose. And I applaud you, Dr. Whitaker, because you always stand on the forefront. You always make it known and you reveal all the clouds. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker. Sir, you have five minutes.
Before I get started, I want to take this time to thank the teachers, community members, our board members, and our students that had the courage to come and stand before you to talk about the needs. That day I was in Ms. Wood's seventh-grade English class was an eye-opener to me. was an eye-opener to me. Because they had questions for me that, that I knew the answers for, but I thought they need to really start understanding how the system works. So I did invite them. I told them that I was coming before council to talk about security as well as increases for their teachers. And I think after hearing this, I already told them that I'm coming back. Because now we're gonna recap and play back what they heard so that they can have a true understanding of why I'm here, why other community members are here, to share and ask for you to fund these raises. I made some notes. The last time, last time I spoke last year, when I addressed the council, word got back to me that after I made my speech, that they said that I was being arrogant in my delivery. But that was not the case. I was just reading and I was just being direct with it. And with that, so that I won't be all over the place because there's so many things that I want to address, particularly the numbers that you look at. And it's always, one thing that we always know, before we throw numbers out there, we need to vet them to make sure that they're accurate. In my role as superintendent, I wear many hats. I manage the day-to-day operations of the school division. I oversee teaching and learning. I work with the staff to develop a sound budget. I'm also an advocate. That's why I'm here tonight, to speak up for the teachers and staff. They deserve a raise. I'm disappointed in the city because it has not provided the money for the hard-working educators on the front lines. Two weeks ago, several of you attended the Teacher of the Year ceremony and saw firsthand the talented staff and the hard workers that we have in our schools. You cheered them on, you sang their praises. But school staff needs more than a pat on the back and a standing ovation. They need a raise. Not only do they need a raise, they deserve it. Portsmouth schools have made much progress due to the dedicated staff working in our buildings. Accreditation rates continue to improve. Graduation rates are getting better. Our course selection is growing. Teachers shape young minds. They prepare young people for college and careers. They serve as mentors, counselors, and so much more. I'm grateful for the dedicated staff of Portsmouth Public Schools, and I wanna keep them here. Every other school division in our region plans to give a raise. I do not want to lose our teachers to a neighboring district because they pay more. But the school system cannot provide a sustainable raise without the help of the city. Given the ongoing fluctuations in the state and federal funding, we must rely on our city for more financial support. Therefore, during this budget cycle, the school division has been engaged with the city more than ever before. We have met with you to discuss our financial position, and we've even cut $1 million around in our own budget. We discussed our needs and ways we can partner to save money and better serve our community. School leaders and city leaders have said education is a key component for community success. I was hoping that the outcome of our discussions would be different than it has been in the last four years. Last night's report, which you, Dr. Patton, showed at the beginning of the meeting, seems to suggest that the city adequately funds the schools. But that really means that the city funds the status quo. We're not okay with the status quo. Our children deserve better. I truly believe that the city, I believe that the city was gonna prove to the teachers and staff that they are worthy of this increased investment. But I'm sad to tell my teachers and staff that this is not the case. Now we're back to the drawing board, or rather, the chopping block. The school board has directed me to explore the possibility of doing the raise ourselves. If you recall, we're in the same position last year. The city would not give the money for teacher raises. Therefore, in order to provide a raise, my team and I cut more than a dozen positions out of our budget. People lost jobs. We cut academic programs like science by severing ties with the city's planetarium and even closed the preschool. I'm wrapping up. More cuts will threaten the progress we have made in our schools. But that is what it will take since you have not agreed to help us with the raises. I will do my best to preserve the classroom, but at this point, I don't have many options. To the parents and staff that are here, I'm sorry you had to hear such somber news. I will work with my team to try to find a way to give you a raise. In the meantime, stay focused on your children and your classrooms. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for standing up for our schools. I hear you, I see you, and I will continue to fight for you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor. Dr. Whitaker.
Dr. Bracy, first of all, I wanna commend you for your moral courage and for standing for what is right. I would like to get in a little more detail on the presentation that was given so that the citizens can be a little more enlightened on the figures that were shown to, to show just what was presented. First of all, I wanna let the citizens know that that misinformation that was given, that was at the request of a majority of council. That speaks volumes. I would like for you to comment on a couple of issues that I saw in that presentation. And that is, it was presented that the average salaries in Portsmouth, the average salary for teachers is $57,415. Now, I know that's not the average salary for a Portsmouth public school teacher. Can you explain what that figure really represents, that $57,415?
Well, while that presentation was being made, my executive director for HR sent me some information. And that average salary is $51,576 is what he pulled. The only thing, Dr. Whitaker, without actually speaking with Dr. Patton to find out exactly what that is, I'm thinking there has to be benefits included in that, which, which would lead me to believe is that, I can't imagine Portsmouth does not lead the way in teacher salary in this region. But according to that, that presentation, it says that we do. But that's, that could not, that could not be far from the truth.
Right, right. And, and given that, I think the, the public needs to know this, particularly the employees. There was a very troubling report that was given in our previous meeting, which I took great offense to. And that is, the city manager presented at the request of Councilwoman Simmons, who wanted to inquire about your salary and wanting, and the assistant superintendent's salary. And so therefore, in less than 24 hours, a report was put together. And it reveals that you are the highest-paid superintendent in the region. Now, I, I find that, I find that greatly disturbing that, that our administration would do that. And, and the only reason that it was done was because there is a mentality on this council that allowed for that to be done. The figure that was given as your salary was $247,850. I was on the school board when we hired you.
Yes.
So I know that's not your salary.
That's right.
Can you explain the error of this figure that it is not a salary figure as presented by our city manager at the request of this council?
Well, Dr. Whitaker, for those of you that were here when I came on board, maybe some three and a half years ago, I came on, and my base salary, as you remember, was, I think, around $184. And maybe two weeks later, I got a call back from, the chair said that, the attorney said that we have to include your benefits into your base salary. So I said, "No problem." So then, when they did that, when my benefits, my health, went into my salary, then it went to $215. So when you see my salary compared with the other school superintendents in the region, it'll say $215,000. Well, the difference in mine, mine is inclusive of my health benefits. The other superintendents do not have that. Theirs is separated. So when you talk about the total compensation and what the figures that you saw was the salary, the health benefits, as well as the, the, the 43B that's included in that, in that information as well. So you see the whole picture. And I don't know what was stated on the other salaries, but I, but I can tell you that I think I am probably the least paid superintendent in the region. So I can tell you that that's not, that's definitely not the case.
And, and I appreciate that. And I, I want the citizens to, to know that because there is an attack on education nationwide from the national administration. And we see Portsmouth as just a microcosm. And I'm offended, once again, when information is presented to the public in a way that clouds the truth. And so I appreciate what you, what you're doing. Also, there was another figure in that presentation that the school should adopt a formula based on the standards of quality. And can you explain, if we were to use the standard of quality as a measure, which is based on the average daily membership, the ADM, how would that impact on the school system?
Well, if it was just the standards of quality, we would have so many, we would have less teachers, less staff because standards of quality is the, the bare minimum. We have standards and what some people don't understand is that we have some schools that are in an area that is high poverty, which a lot of our schools are. And federal guidelines say that we have to have a smaller teacher-student ratio. Well, the money that we get from the state and the money from the city is not enough. So we get the federal allocation to offset that so that we can have additional teachers in those, in those classrooms. So that's, that's, that's how we do that.
Okay.
And with the, I think you said something about the, the ADM?
Right.
The ADM, ADM is declining statewide. That's not something that's unique to Portsmouth. And I think that that's something that gets lost in it because you say that, "Well, your ADM is declining, so therefore, your funding doesn't need to remain at a, at a certain level." Well, if, if you take that position, then look at our neighbors. ADM is declining there, but they still are offering increases to their staff. So we gotta have the resources that we need to work with our population. And we have a, we have a difficult task trying to get our population up to task because of the, the high poverty level. We are a true urban school division. And we need, our needs are greater than some of our neighbors. You know, we don't have the suburban areas. This is true urban. And, and our needs are greater. So if it was a sense that one school had more than the other, it's a need. And none of our principals, none of our staff would, would question that. We've had those conversations. Because those, those students in some of our high-poverty areas, we have to put additional personnel there. Because when they come to us, they don't have the same resources as some of the other students that are, that are across the river. So we gotta, we gotta make sure that we tailor and tier it based on the actual needs. And that's what we've been doing. And we've been transparent with what we've been doing with our budget. We're not trying to hide anything. And I don't want anyone to get the impression that that's what we're doing, because we're not.
Right, right. I appreciate it. And once again, I, I thank you for fighting for the children and also the employees of Portsmouth Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Clark.
Dr. Bracy, I just have a couple of questions for you, please, sir. I don't know if you were at our public work session earlier this evening, but we've been discussing sometime, one of the things about the $1 million that goes to the budget for the school bus replacement.
Yes.
And the question has been that, you know, we've been giving you, which is, it's, it's projected in the upcoming fiscal year of $1 million for bus replacement. But the question being is, is the state also provides monies for school bus replacement? And basically, the, basically, there was a understanding at some point prior to my being here. But the way it was designed was that the city would place the $1 million to purchase the budget, buses. And then when the money came back from the state, the money would come back, either go in CalPrune or something. But as of this date, the information that we were given tonight, since fiscal year 2015, there's a total of $3,239,567 that the school system has received from the state for buses that we haven't returned to the, to the city. Can you speak on where this money went and why we have never gotten it back?
Will you talk about annually or?
Yes.
Or just over that period of time?
Annually, annually, you get $1 million a year. So most recently, this fiscal year, it says that the schools were given $658,153 for buses that, according to the original agreement, would come back to the city. But that hasn't happened. So I'd like to know where these funds are being used and, you know, what's going on with the money if that was the way the agreement was.
Well, that agreement was in place prior to my arrival to Mr. Clark.
Sure.
We've had that discussion last year that, when we were talking about, going back to that, that OPEP discussion in terms of trying to look at how that money could be used. But the way that, that money that's coming from the state is used, it's, it's, it's for salaries. You know, it's not just for buses. So it's for those people that work in, that work in that, in that area. Now, as far as the, the money, as far as, I think it was more of a gentleman's agreement because I don't think there's anything written with that. Have you all seen a written document that says it's some type of MOU? I think it was more of an understanding.
Yes, I think so.
It is?
There's?
It's written?
There's, there's, there's not an official document that the school board passed. There's a letter. But that's not the issue here tonight.
Well, I believe I thought I had the floor.
Dr. Whitaker, you don't have the floor. Councilman Clark has the floor. Please continue.
Just, just continuing the conversation. And, and I agree, the agreement was done before you were here and before I was here as well. But the question is, is once, you know, within the past couple of years, it's been brought to your attention, if that was the agreement, you know, the thought is, is if the school system's not holding up on that side of the agreement, then why would council be giving you another $1 million every year with the expectation we're getting some kind of return and we're not? So I'm just trying to figure out the funds because according, according to the numbers we've been given, you know, we've been given, but we haven't given, been given back what we're supposed to get. So that, I'm just trying to figure the numbers out for myself.
I can understand that. And I've had that conversation with Dr. Patton. And, and with her, she has not said anything about changing anything as far as getting you information and asking, do you get answers to your questions? I can't answer that right here because that's something that, that we haven't looked at in too, quite some time. So I would have to research that and share that information with the city manager. But I can't speak off the top of my head as it relates to it because I don't wanna give false information.
Oh, I understand that. And, and while you're here just to speak, you know, there's been several people coming up here speaking tonight saying that we are anti-schooled. I can tell you right now, I am not anti-schooled. I'm a product of Portsmouth Public Schools and a graduate of IC Norcombe High School. And it's just like, it was recommended to do a new middle school. And we're on top of that, you know, and we're gonna be looking at paying $3 million for 20 years in debt service to construct that school. And I support that because it's needed. So, you know, that's another issue that we're putting $3 million up this year as well. So, you know, the question is, is, I'm not against, you know, everybody, but the question being is, if you're asking for this money, where would you take the money from?
Well, I think a, a better question would be, is to ask me, do I want a new school or do I want 2% increase for the teachers? So if it's a either-or, I want the teachers to have the increase. Because without teachers, what's the purpose of a new school?
All right, please, please. Let me remind everybody, this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for a city council to, to receive comments from the public. And for more than 45 minutes, we've been listening. And when we get into a debate, we do an injustice to the people who showed up, who may have to go home for some reason. So let's, let's end the debate now. And I propose that we have a call meeting this coming Monday and invite Dr. Bracy. And we can ask him and let him bring his staff. And we can have a full debate at that time on Monday. But I think we're doing a very disservice to the public by not listening to you. But I think we're doing a very disservice to the public by not listening to you. And for those of you who hear for the first time, members of the public ask us questions, we don't respond, because you end up in a fifteen-minute dialogue that sounds good and it's important, but it's a disservice to the people who want to speak and maybe have a time limitation. So to my colleagues, I want us to consider having a call meeting this coming Monday for the purpose of discussing our questions and have a full dialogue with Dr. Bracy and his, his team. Okay? With that, let's continue the public hearing. Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Thank you for the good work that you're doing. The next speaker, sir, you have five minutes, and this is a public hearing on the city's operating budget. We're here to listen to you.
All right. My name is Christopher John Abraham Baker. My address is five oh four Chandler Harper Drive, and I am a freshman at Wilson High School with honor, with honor grades. And I cannot have done it without my teachers. They are, they do not just teach us, but they give us hope, they help us exceed our limits. One time, I was feeling sad or depressed, and one teacher, she comforted me and gave me hope. I also would like to say that I, about the school security, my school security, earlier there was a shooting attempt, not a shooting attempt, but a shooting threat at Wilson High School. And I had to, I felt like I had to go to the library instead of lunch, because that made me feel safe instead of me eating lunch. I also want to say that, and when people, when kids walk in the school, we have one metal detector, and we don't even use it. We, our security guards, they select certain students to go get searched, but I feel like that is not enough. We should, we should let our students walk through the metal detector. We should have a wand to search students. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker, you have five minutes. This is a public hearing on the city's proposed operating budget for 2018, 2019. Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. Last time I was here, talking about the operating budget, I made some inaccurate statements, not with regard to the tipping fee for trash disposal. What I said about the increase and decrease in the tipping fee was correct. But what I did not get correct, and I've done some research subsequently, is how customer rates have tracked those ups and downs in the tipping fee. And by comparing the numbers, it turns out that the tipping fee really influences the rates that were charged as customers in a minimal way. And in fact, the tipping fees were significantly higher in 2009 and have been on a downward curve since then. Our rates have come lower, and last year, actually, the city paid it forward by giving us a reduction in refuse disposal rates prior to the tipping fee reduction that occurred in January. So I want to correct the record. I want to correct what I said. I want to also speak about funding for education. And this is something I learned from Grey's Anatomy. You too can be a superhero. Councilmember Whitaker is already doing it. In fact, he's almost the League of Justice on his own. But all of you can be superheroes, because you're dealing with a heavy, almost immovable object between here and budget adoption. Money that should have been ours to spend this year, this coming fiscal year, is now tied up in court. And so you've had to lower your sights and lower your expectations about what was possible. That's prudent, because unlike the federal government, we can't print money, and we can't borrow trillions of dollars to fund operations. We have to balance the budget. But the advantage that you have, that the school board doesn't have, is you have a general fund with stored value in it from years that were a little bit fatter than this next year is going to be. They don't have that. Our law in the Commonwealth doesn't provide them that. They have to come to you with their hats in their hands and ask for the money. And it's not right that when city employees received bonuses, retention bonuses last year, the custodians, the bus drivers, the bus monitors, the cafeteria workers, the teachers, the administrators, did not. They are Portsmouth Public Schools. Portsmouth has a responsibility to fund them. And, you know, that presentation earlier this evening about state funding and city funding and being above the line and doing our best, you know, Mark Twain said it well. There are three kinds of lies: lies, damned lies, and statistics. So you can smother us in statistics, but the bottom line is, if you don't fund the schools adequately, then our future is being deprived of the mental nourishment that it needs to make the city better going forward. So come through. Be a superhero. It's not going to be easy, but it can be done. Do your job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, you have five minutes. Please state your name and your, your address.
My name is Claude Parent. I live at eight oh two Arnold Palmer Drive. And I'm also the proud chairman of the Portsmouth School Board. You know, the school board has goals. We have five main goals that we have to focus on. And those goals are to make sure that all of our students have the highest academic opportunities possible. We want to make sure that our students are supported in the classroom, the social, emotional stability and development of all of our children. We also are focused, in your hearing, you've heard a lot tonight, and I want to applaud all of the teachers and the pupils and the parents and everyone that came out to support this budget. Because number three is critical, because you, we know that we have to recruit and retain highly qualified personnel. The other thing that we want to focus on, and you heard from PTA president, Ms. Clifton, is to focus on our, our parents, our PTA, and have a strong parent PTA in our school division. And of course, we want to make sure that all of our financial obligations to the city council are met, and that we have a high degree of integrity of, of the money that is allocated to us by the state, by the federal government, and through our local body as yourselves. And we've done that. We have proven that. The last four years, five years, we have sent to you each month the financial statements. And I have not heard from one of you that anything is incorrect or there's any impropriety regarding our budget. Councilmembers, we cannot achieve these goals unless you've fully funded. And Dr. Whitaker understands what I'm talking about. You have never fully funded a school board budget. It's never been done.
Please, please.
We can't accomplish the goals that we've set. And one of the goals that we're looking, we're talking about tonight, and you've, you've heard from all of these speakers, is that we need to make sure that we are at least giving a two percent salary, salary increase. Now, when you look at the other, other school divisions, Chesapeake is recommending a four percent salary increase. Norfolk is looking at three point three for teachers, three point two for administrators, three point three for staff, and six point two for bus drivers. Suffolk is looking at three thousand dollar raise for their teachers and a two percent for their staff. Virginia Beach, Hampton, and Newport News are all looking at two percent. And we cannot, ladies and gentlemen, do any less. And I'm hoping and praying that we can do, that we can do more. I applaud the fact that you have given the board a million dollars for school safety. And I thank you for that. I really do. Because that is, that is one of the issues that, across the country, school safety is extremely important. But it's not only school safety. You gotta look at teaching and learning is also very, very important. As Ben mentioned, we are, and I spent thirty-nine years of my life in Portsmouth Public Schools, and now eight, almost eight years on the school board. Teaching and learning is critical. We need to make sure that we have adequate resources. Some of you took the bus tour and saw the technology in some of our schools. The bottom line is that we need additional funds to have, to provide our school system. Now, we are an urban school division. Some people have tried to compare Portsmouth with Chesapeake and Virginia Beach and other school divisions. They're not urban. We're urban with issues that are very unique, and it takes extra money. So when you see the figures that Dr. Patton put up tonight, I mean, that's the first time that I've seen it. And I know I took statistics, and numbers can be skewed. And I want to sit down with Dr. Bracy and his staff and with the board and figure out how in the world did Dr. Patton come up with those, those figures? Because they're not, they're not accurate. The other thing is that before we, before we submitted the budget I'm almost through, before we submitted the budget to you, the budget was already, the, the budget was already cut by one million dollars. And then we turned around last year, because you didn't provide the additional funding, and we, we cut fifteen positions plus we cut, we closed, I know, I'm gonna finish right now. We closed Emily Swong. So I am appealing to you, board members, council members, please, go, let's, let's sit down, Mayor Row. And Dr. Patton's not here. We've had our monthly meetings, and I thought we had a deal. And now I find out, we don't have the deal that we talked about. And there's a lot of things that members of the council, you need to understand, integrity is, is a main issue. When you sit down with two people in a room, and Dr. Bracy and I sit down with Dr. Patton and Mayor Row, and I thought we had a deal. So you're not, you gotta let your yes be yes, and your no be no, and have integrity enough to support whatever it is that you're, that you're offering. And I want, I want to applaud the people who came out tonight. I beg you, Mr. Clark, I was your principal at Portnorf. Mrs. Simmons, I taught you.
Claude, can you?
At church, I'm finishing now, I'm finishing.
Please.
I taught you. So I expect both of you.
Please sit down.
The rest of you to.
You've done well.
Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't have a deal.
I expect you to do what's right, all of you to do what's right.
Thank you, thank you.
For these teachers, thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call, I have the authority to do this. I'm gonna call a meeting of city council to discuss the school budget for Monday, thirty April, at six PM. And let's be courteous to the people, the people who left already because of the clock. Let's not make this a debate. We can debate this coming Monday. And so let's hear from the public, sir. Dr. Whitaker, I'll recognize you.
I just want to thank you. I know what your heart is. I've served with you on the school board and appreciate your fighting for the salaries for everyone. And so I just want to.
Thank you very much.
Commend you for that.
Thank you.
Please. This is a public hearing. We want to hear from you. And please respect the clock. I'm trying to be fair. Next speaker. Is there anybody that wants to speak on the proposed operating budget for 2018, 2019? Please, yeah.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Will you state your name and address, please?
Yes. My name is Margaret Mitchell. I reside at five seventeen Spectator here in the city of Portsmouth. I have been teaching in Portsmouth for fourteen years. Previously, I was in Florida. And when my parents were very ill, I wanted to come back home and teach in my city. At that time, Virginia Beach was given a three thousand dollar signing bonus, but I wanted to stay in my city. I was able to finish a twenty-year career as a music, music educator at I C Norcombe High School. And then I was allowed to use my graduate degree to move on to elementary education. At that time, I was able to teach at the academy. And then I moved on to Douglas Park Elementary. When I'm asked several, many times, where do you teach? I get some gas, will you teach at this particular school? Well, I wanted to just take the moment to highlight our superintendent, because he has made great strides in making equity. At that time, I was on the other side of the tracks to teach. And he has done everything in his power to make ends meet. I would like to dub him the master of making ends meet for Portsmouth Public Schools, because he has done everything in his power to fight with us and for us. And so we just don't want the two percent, we need the two percent. We need it. And then what does that really do at the end of the day, when insurances are going up? When teachers are coming from Gates County, coming through the tolls to drive every day? So really, what have we done at the end of the day? Break even or just a little bit less than what we make now? So I'm asking you to reconsider. We don't just want it, we need it. And really, we need more than that. Many of our teachers, you know that every day we come out of our own pockets. If they are to add up what they do right now, how much, what percentage comes out of their paycheck, because they really care about students? And our current, current government wants to cut that teacher tax credit that we have for next year. They want to take that away from us. So if the city does it to us, the government does it to us, well, what are we left with? So I ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. And for everybody's information, we haven't considered anything yet. This is the public hearing. We're considering your comments. You want the floor?
Yes.
You have the floor.
Yeah. I would like to thank everyone who came out. I wanted to have the privilege of, of hearing everyone speak tonight. And as one of the new council members, I take the information to heart. I take what our city manager gives us, and we take a hard look at that. We meet with our school board members, and we take a look at that information. And we take everything that you say in these meetings that you come, you take your time out to come and present to us, and you speak from your heart. And I, like the gentleman, Mr. Baker, was a perfect attendance. I never missed a, a day of school from the first grade through the twelfth grade. So I am an advocate for the schools. And, and I applaud our mayor for bringing us an opportunity to come back to a meeting on April thirtieth to address and take another look at some of these issues. This is the first time that I've heard from anyone from the schools that they would rather have a raise than to have the schools. Because when we had the report from the, the construction company, Con, we thought that, in my impression, I thought that the schools was needed. But looking at the average daily membership with the number of students that are declining, it looked like we would be in our best use to be able to combine schools or to eliminate some schools and combine what we have. And, and I would like to see our teachers get a raise. I would like to see our fire and police get a cola. And I would also like to see our, our city staff to get a, a cola. So when we take a look at that, I hope that we would be able to consider all of this information, so that we can, you know, award all of our teachers and staff and, and everyone in the city who's doing a good job for our, our city.
Thank you. Let's continue with the public hearing. Anybody else? Is there any new information, too? This is a, a public hearing on the operating budget for twenty- This is a public hearing on the operating budget for 2018, 2019.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sarah Duncan Hines. I reside at 207 Leonard Road, Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm a third-generation Portsmouth girl. My family is shipyard. That's how I'm here, and that's how I'm, I'm still here, is because of the shipyard. I'm also here because I want to be here. I've had plenty of opportunities to go elsewhere. I worked in Portsmouth Public Schools for 12 years. I left and I came back, and I sit on the board. And I'm proud to sit on that board. I'm also the mother of a seven-year-old who goes to our schools. So I'm talking to you as a mother as well. I'm also talking to you as a taxpayer. And I'm gonna say, number one, raises or schools should not be either or. There is nothing about education that should be either or. And I really don't think it was a fair question to ask the superintendent, which would you rather have? Because what I'm gonna say is, my children, when they walk into my classroom as an 11th grade teacher, let me tell you what's in my desk drawer for my kids. Deodorant, socks, granola bars, mints, tampons, you name it, I have it. Why? Because that's what our kids need first and foremost. They need to be taken care of as children. They don't have a choice as to where they live, where they're born, or what they come to school with. So to ask us either or is an unfair question. The second piece of that is, as a board, we have not discussed any building of any new schools. We have not had that conversation. So when it comes to looking at new schools, we would all like to have new schools. However, the board has not voted about anything about a new school. So our board also needs to take a break and step back and have that conversation with you as well. There were several other people up here tonight, and I didn't make a speech because I didn't want to be repetitive, but I want to add on to the question about SOQ funding. SOQ funding is minimal. And in kindergarten, SOQ funding is one teacher for 36 students. One teacher for 36 students is standard of quality. Standard of quality is one principal for 700 students at an elementary level. Please, parents, tell me who wants a building principal that has to man over 700 students and do all the other jobs? That is SOQ funding. The state does not even have a budget yet for us to even deliberate about. So a lot of this back and forth, it, it is state funding as well. It is not all on you. But our budget is comprised of you and state and federal, all of which are questionable. So a friendly dialogue is much needed in order to put this budget together. One of the members, one of the speakers tonight said, what happened if our teachers didn't show up? And I'm gonna stand here and tell you, my Portsmouth teachers will show up. My Portsmouth teachers will show up because they want their children to graduate. Because without that teacher in that classroom, they don't have a safe place to go. My teachers show up hurt and sick because they want to be there for those kids. Because it's teaching them grit and perseverance also to be there when they're not feeling their best. Sometimes our teachers are the best people that they get to see on that day because mom is working a double shift. They may not get to see mom or dad. They may not to see, get to see grandma. But our kids come to school to see us, and our teachers come to school to see them. So our teachers will show up. Teacher shortage is not unique to Portsmouth. It is not unique to Virginia. It is nationwide. We attempt to maintain, recruit, and retain qualified teachers. That is a hard enough job when you are in a city like Portsmouth who has, I hate to say it, a reputation for being combative. I need to make sure that my teachers come to school every day and give 110% because we know that we are standing behind them. I need to make sure that I get the students from seeing you, rather than somebody who barely walked across the stage. Because my kids don't deserve that. My seven-year-old does not deserve somebody who barely walked across the stage. My child deserves somebody who was better and who knows how to raise the bar. That's what I want for my child, and that's what I want for everybody else. I think I've said enough. I rounded up what everybody wanted to say. But I'm gonna say it one more time. Education should not be an either or. It should be a discussion. Thank you, and I look forward to further conversations.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak on the proposed operating budget for 2018, 2019? If you want to speak, come to the lectern. Please state your name, and you will have five minutes. Anybody want to speak? This public hearing is closed, and we'll take a 10-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 9:26. We're back in order, and we're still on public hearings, and we're at public hearing 18-156B, which is a public hearing on the proposed five-year capital improvements program, which covers the years 2019 to 2023. And this is what this public hearing is on. It's not on the operating budget per se. It's on the five-year capital improvements program for the years 2019, 2023. And we have one person who has signed up to speak. And after that speaker, I'll open up the floor for the rest of the audience to provide comments in either way. And that first speaker, sir, I'll call you, is Mark Udoni Yotrowski. And sir, you have five minutes. And the public hearing, by the way, is open.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow interested parties. So the city council, in its retreat, discussed the Crawford Gateway and the vision. And this has been a longstanding project, a longstanding concept. Get the public buildings off the waterfront, free up the waterfront for commercial or private development. The problem is, the time and tide have not waited. And so now, the seas get a little deeper every day. And when we have severe storm events and even abnormal high tides, the water gets closer to all the low-lying areas. The budget doesn't address this particular problem. There's no money for flood control appropriated for the upcoming fiscal year. But unless you have your head in the sand, like some members of the administration in Washington, and members of Congress, and some in the General Assembly, you know that the science is working against us. There are major glaciers melting at both polar regions. So why are we not looking ahead and trying to put some things in place that will at least mitigate the effect of sea level rise? We're right here in the flood zone, all along our beautiful waterfront, and we have significant investment in infrastructure here. You are not going to be out of this building next week. Maybe not next year, maybe not for several years after. The other piece of this that concerns me is, if you look back to the hurricane season just past, most of the storms that made landfall in the U.S. or in the Caribbean came in as categories four and five storms. I haven't seen that many storms at that intensity in my lifetime. So we are building to a crescendo. And storms in the past, because of the seawater temperature differential between where they typically form off the coast of Africa and here, they lose a lot of their punch before they get here. That's not happening. They're not dropping down to category one and twos when they get here. Sandy was a big ugly storm when it went up the coast past us, thankfully. A direct hit by a category three would be catastrophic for the city of Portsmouth. And on the waterfront, you know, that's the front line. So we really need to be building this in to our capital budgement, budget. We need to be prepared for what likely will come. Thank you very much.
And thank you, sir. Now, I'll open it up to anybody that wants to speak in any way to the proposed capital improvements budget program for 2019, 2023. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? If you do, please come to the lectern and state your name and address. Okay, there are none, and so therefore closes public hearing. Which brings us to the next public hearing, and it's the last public hearing of the evening. It's 18-156, and it's the public hearing on the proposed real property tax increase. This public hearing is open. Is there anybody that wants to speak on this matter? If you want to speak, please come to the lectern, and please state your name and address. And you have five minutes.
My name is Garland Alexander. I live at 2913 Tam Bark Lane. I'm speaking on the real estate rate because of what I've heard tonight. If, if this council believes that we need a real estate tax increase to give us teachers a fair raise and to look after our retirees that put their life in, in the occupation of public safety, then so be it. And I believe that, but what was put out last night at the thing about the un, un, unsecured, unassigned fund balance, by going to, from 25% we normally carry down to what they recommend of 18%, you're talking about about 18, $8 million. So I believe there's money there that could be freed up if they don't, if they don't need to carry that kind of unsecured, unassigned fund balance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak on the proposed five-year capital improvements program that covers the years 2019 to 2023? Any additional speakers?
Real estate tax.
Real estate, ah, thank you, sir.
Let me restate this. This is the public hearing on the proposed real estate tax increase. Any other speakers?
It's getting late.
Gonna do it again?
No, no, I said it's getting late. That's it.
This public hearing is closed. Which brings us to unfinished business, item 18133, use permit. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption to the resolution?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a use permit, UP 1802, to T-Mobile Communications to construct and operate a 160-foot monopole telecommunications tower and equipment compound at Zero Halifax Avenue, Tax Parcel 0353-001. 11, excuse me.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, this motion carries 6-1.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18157, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding from the United States Department of Agriculture through the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $45,005.63, appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Social Services Fund for the Elevate SNAP Employment and Training Plot Pilot Project.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion on this duly made and seconded motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 18158, which is the consideration of another ordinance. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance, one, amending the education category of the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund Budget to establish a new project titled School Safety Improvements. Two, appropriating $1 million from the FY 2018 unassigned general fund balance to the FY 2018 general fund. And three, transferring $1 million from the FY 2018 general fund to the school safety improvement projects in the education category of the 2018 Capital Improvement Fund Budget.
So that we may consider this item, this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, and we're ready for a discussion. And we do have one speaker, Mark Udoni Yotrowski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, one last time, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow interested parties. So you'd really like me to come back as a non-agenda speaker? Okay.
Will you keep to the point, please?
I will, if everybody else will. So with regard to this item, I have a concern. I like the fact that you have, that the ordinance phrases it as a project. Because I think it should be clear to everybody, when you look at this topic, that it's not a one-and-done or a 1 million-and-done. What is laid out in this proposal are certain baseline improvements in school security. And I think they have merit. They may increase the level of security some degree from where we are now. But as I've stated to you all before, I believe this is something that lends itself to a regional effort, where best practices should be evaluated. We don't have to invent it ourselves, but we need to look at what school systems are doing across the country and around the world, if necessary. I don't see us hiring a bunch of consultants on this. I think if we use the resources that we already have, like the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, we have an opportunity to multiply our force with a minimal investment. But you can make the schools a fortress. Students still have to go out at the end of the day. And with people armed with high-powered rifles, you know, just like the shooter in Las Vegas, if you find a vantage point, you can shoot at parents and students and teachers as they're leaving school or they're coming into school. So you really have to look at this holistically. The other aspect of it that you have to look at is the kinds of conditions, the environment in the school, that create marginalization, discrimination, that make people attending school feel like outsiders and feeling the need to get even. Looking back at some of the high-profile incidents in this country, the people who brought the guns to school and shot up... the people who brought the guns to school and shot up the place were loners, outsiders. They were marginalized individuals. So we really need to look at how we build an inclusive community within our schools and within our city. So this is a nice down payment on what needs to be done, but it is a project as you have, as you have framed it. Let's carry it forward into subsequent budget years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And we do have one more speaker, Donna Si. And ma'am, you have Oh, I'm sorry. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the speaker. I think, I think this lends itself, school safety lends itself to a regional effort in an exchange of ideas. I was particularly alarmed tonight to hear the students offer, and I think a few teachers, that although our schools are equipped with metal detectors, apparently they're not being used properly. Some say they're not being monitored. In fact, I asked that question at the, at the work session. The speakers tonight seem to validate that. But safety also should, should include the school bus ramps. Also, it should include the school buses themselves. So I think we have a lot of work to do. I don't look at that as a one and done situation either. And safety today is not going to be safety tomorrow. So the techniques will change. Unfortunately, the, the people who want to do bad, their techniques will change, and we'll have to keep up with it. And to do that is going to require everything from new school design. We're talking about new schools. We need to make sure the safety factor is built into the schools, not added on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Moody. Also, with this investment, you mentioned some of the equipment that the students mentioned. Some of, some of those monitors are broken. And so the fact that we're going to be investing a million, it is going to be ongoing because it's going to be maintenance issues as well.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Si, you have the floor, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Item number eighteen dash one fifty-eight is an ordinance to amend the education category for the year twenty seventeen eighteen Capital Improvement Fund to establish the project titled School Safety Improvements. That will appropriate one million dollars from the year twenty seventeen eighteen unassigned general fund balance to the general fund. And then transferring the one million dollars from the year twenty seventeen eighteen general fund to the school safety improvement project for the year twenty seventeen eighteen of the education category Capital Improvement Plan. In the city manager's report, it reads that on March the twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, the city manager recommended the one million dollars to be appropriated from the unassigned general fund balance to perform school safety improvements. Also, the city manager and the superintendent of schools have established a joint committee to review school safety needs and funding solutions. This is an example of taking away the rights of the people to self-govern. The public has not been engaged in the decision of the city manager and the superintendent of schools to decide how to manage the safety of the schools in the district. The funds for the safety project is planned to be two-way radios for all schools, camera systems in all thirteen elementary schools and three middle schools, security stations, and installation of a visitors' management system. There has been no request for proposals, RFP, of assets to determine the cost of obtaining these assets. New research was done to discover what the cause of the recent events relating to the safety of our nation's students. The foundation cause of events of loss of life on school property and other places is the result of greed, money. The last school event happened because of the money the leaders wanted at the expense of disregard and discipline in the school division. So the city manager made the lone decision to take the people's money and hand it over to the school without their input, taking one million dollars to make the schools into little jails instead of paying one million dollars to have the rest restorative justice practices put into the schools to help resolve discipline problems when they arise. At the core of restorative justice practices is the belief that people will make positive changes when those in positions of authority do things with them rather than to them. The restorative justice program encourages collective responsibility in which students help create and enforce the rules. They are able to self-govern and learn to be leaders of the future. They won't be like the leaders of city council and the school board. They will be able to communicate. They will be able to work together to solve problems in the city. Conflict is the order of each day here in Portsmouth. There is an example of that on the agenda for tonight as well. Item number eighteen dash sixty, one sixty, which the city attorney office needs, four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the significant losses
Ma'am, you signed up for this item?
Have been filed against the city for real and personal property tax assessment. The people signed petitions to implement the whole school change program that was given to the school board on September the twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen. The school board blew off the people's foresight. Now the school wants our money to put assets into the school to make them little jails. What kind of education are these students going to get, I wonder? We, the people, want to use C.R.F.P.s before money is handed over. We, the people, want the whole school change program implemented as part of the safety of the schools as well as their assets. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? The motion is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to eighteen one fifty-nine, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a Virginia Trees for Clean Water Program grant in the amount of three thousand, three hundred dollars from the Virginia Department of Forestry, and appropriating said funds in the F.Y. two thousand eighteen Grants Fund for use by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services for the planting of trees along city roadways.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a duly made and seconded motion. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item eighteen one sixty, which is the consideration, the adoption of another ordinance. Would you read the caption?
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the transfer of four hundred fifty thousand dollars from unexpended non-departmental line items in the F.Y. two thousand eighteen general fund budget to the city attorney legal contractual services line item in the F.Y. two thousand eighteen general fund budget.
Thank you. In order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, which is to adopt? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to eighteen dash one sixty-one, which is the consideration of another ordinance. Would you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending ordinance nineteen seventy-eight dash one thirty-three titled An Ordinance Closing the Following Street, a portion of Newport Avenue for the purpose of correcting a patent error in the legal description included in said ordinance.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Dr. Whitaker? And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
And that concludes the city manager's report, which brings us to new business, item eighteen one sixty-two. We do have a report, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. The personnel committee recommends the following appointments, boards and commissions. Hampton Roads Transit, Paratransit Board, Dolores Haywood. Parks and Recreation Commission, Carl Jackson, the third, and Willie Bamberg. Southampton Roads Disability Service Board, Lisa Kit.
Good. And that comes as a form of a motion?
That is a motion.
Good. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Items submitted by council members, Vice Mayor Semus?
Yes, sir. Just one item tonight, the Fraternal Order of Police. Gossport Lodge Twenty is having a, a party to benefit the F.O.P. this coming Saturday night. It's at the Scottish Rite Center at Hatton Point Lane and Cedar Lane with Ruck's Barbecue and the band Soul and Tent. From six-thirty to ten-thirty P.M., the tickets are twenty-five dollars a person and include the dinner. And you can buy your tickets at the door and encourage all to attend, hear the music, and have some good barbecue.
Thank you.
Support a good cause.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I want to raise the issue that I raised yesterday evening with the police chief for council to give some consideration to. And, and that is the incident involving the officer and the young man that was shot, that was on the front page of the paper today. I find that whole transaction very disturbing. I think that there needs to be some discussion on council about the whole culture and about this whole issue of not being more transparent. I know there's other cities, we see them presenting this information publicly, and I think we're handling it in the wrong way by not being more transparent about it. So I really think that we need to reconsider how we publicly handle those issues. And I'm, I'm very disturbed with what I've seen presented on the video, and I definitely think it needs more discussion.
Yes, sir. Any discussion on this? You're, you're asking that we discuss not so much the video, but the way we handle situations like this?
Both. I think both need to have a discussion amongst council. I think that it has been too, that was back in October. And from what has been presented to the public for, for council not to say anything to that. I know that there's an investigation going on, but I know there are other localities across the country where you've seen similar incidences where information was presented publicly, and there were public comments made. And so I, I just, I think it's being handled too secretively, and it needs to have more transparency to it. And I, and, and I am troubled by what I saw presented. That's why I think it needs more discussion.
Good. Can we, I know we can. Is there consensus to ask the, the city attorney to give us a memorandum on what we should and should not discuss as evidence? Is there consensus on that? And ask for that memorandum this week so that if, if we need to discuss this Monday night, we can do that when we have our special call meeting that I'm going to call. Is that agreeable with everybody? Not you? Is there a majority who are, okay. Councilman Moody was first.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I wanted to address this publicly. We all know there was an article in the Virginia Pilot about, apparently claiming we didn't know where our streetlights were located, which we actually do. But along with that, the other piece of that is that citizens need to know how to, what the process is to request a street light. If they feel their street is either dark or the light is out, there is a process for that. And I've asked staff to come back publicly and share that information at a public work session, and I believe there was a consensus at the work session
Yes, sir.
to do just that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Clark?
Yes, just in, in reference to the discussion about the police investigation, anytime there's ongoing information, investigations, just like the police chief told us last night, not allowed to discuss what's going on with that investigation. And in reference to this, that's why the state police come in and do the investigation. So it's an impartial investigation, so we're not investigating our own situations. So it's been procedure and policy always that while it's under investigation, nobody can discuss it. Once the findings come out from the state police, there can be a report on it, and then they will notify everybody of what the findings are of their investigation. But until that point, it's not public for a reason, because it's still in an investigation phase.
Dr. Whitaker?
Just, just to comment, I know that that's not a standard practice because since I've been on council, I've, we've reviewed police tapes of incidences that has happened before. And so that's, that's not a standing practice. And as I said, if it's some type of violation, it's interesting that you see other jurisdictions handling these situations with a little more transparency.
Which brings us to report on pending items. Mr. Page, do we have any pending items? Okay. Which brings us to non-agenda speakers. And before we, so we don't lose this at the end, I am going to call a special call meeting of city council for six P.M. this coming Monday, April thirtieth, in the council conference room for the purpose of discussing our overall budget, but in particular the school budget. Which brings us to non-agenda speakers. And our first non-agenda speaker is Mr. Smith or Mrs. Smith? Llewellyn Smith? I'm sorry. Did I print? Llewellyn. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Llewellyn Smith. I live at four-ten Felton Road in Portsmouth, Virginia, where I've spent most of my life. I too graduated from I.C. Norcom High School in nineteen eighty-one and a product of the public school system. I think I turned out to be a contributing member of society, and I thank Portsmouth for giving me that upper education. So I've been before you in the past presenting on cannabis reform in the city of Portsmouth. And tonight I chose to wear green to represent a couple of things, actually. First of all, we're talking about money and the budget. I thought green was appropriate for that. And cannabis is green, and it has green flowers. So my dress has green flowers on it as well. And I'm hoping that perhaps marijuana reform will lead to an increase in opportunities within our city to develop some revenue along the lines of the cannabis industry. I've been here before you as a nurse, talking about medical marijuana and how it really is essential for many people to use as medication. It truly is a medication. And I think most of us agree that now. And the cannabis industry typically starts in areas as a medicinal product, and it moves forward later on as laws pass into other things. On the sixteenth, the Virginia Board of Pharmacy put out the application for dispensaries for the state of Virginia. They are calling it a pharmaceutical processor application. And that application is really an application to apply. The pharmaceutical processor The pharmaceutical processor that Virginia visualizes is a vertically integrated system where you grow the cannabis, produce it as medication, and sell it all from the same I would like very much to be one of those applicants for that pharmaceutical processor in Virginia. They have divided the region into five different areas. Portsmouth is in Region 5. I want to serve my community. I want to serve the city of Portsmouth. I don't want people to have to leave our area to go get their medication. It's a vulnerable population. They deserve service. What I'm asking city to do is think about it. And as I come forward in the upcoming months, application is due, pre-application is due June the 8th. On September 25th, the state will decide who gets the applications. So I'd like to come forth and talk about zoning and things that will be necessary if Portsmouth chooses to allow such a processor to occur. So I'm going to be brief about it and let you know that my heart is in the right place. I want to provide medication for individuals. I'd also like to see this industry grow. It really could be a moneymaker. It really could be. In Pablo, Colorado, in 2014, they were desperate because their steel industry had failed. So they took on medical marijuana, and now they are flourishing. Their population is about 100,000. We have about 95,000, and I looked at the census report. So if you would please give it some consideration. I've been up here with you for three times now. I hope that you know who I am. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. I'm treasurer for the American Cannabis Nurses Association, and I'm an expert on the subject. So please, consider my request, and I hope to be working with each of you in the near future, and we'll see where it takes us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sergio Neil. And sir, you have five minutes. And it says that you want to speak on the CIP. We've already had that public...
No, actually, that was a mix-up because I thought I could speak on both, but I think we cleared it up. Thank you, Ms. White, for clearing that up for me. Anyway, my name is...
You have five minutes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Sergio Neil. I reside at 1560 Darren Circle here in the city of Portsmouth. I come before you tonight to address our education funding here in the school system. It's no secret that I'm running for school board. But before I do that, I want to clear up some misinformation that came out. First of all, and I've discussed it with Mr. Smith, with Councilman Smith, and I'm going to say this again, for somebody to come up here and question his loyalty to education, I think is a disservice to him. He served on this city's school board, and I think if anybody knows him for who he truly is, he really does stand for education. So I think it's very unfair to have somebody come up here and question his, and not only his, but specifically his, because of his true dedication to education, I think that is really unfair to him. Moving forward, for somebody to come up here and question Dr. Patton's commitment to this city as it relates to her trying to figure out information when it comes to making a budget for the city, I think that's a disservice to her. Nobody is perfect, but to try to throw her under the bus for, I mean, who knows? We all have to sit here and look at these numbers when they come down. Nobody is perfect. There may have been some errors in how the information came out, but yet still, once the facts are figured out, we will all know where we stand, and then we all need to come together and make a plan to make sure that education gets to where it needs to be in this city. And, you know, we can pay people to parade and put on performances because other people don't have the gall to do so. But I think as citizens of Portsmouth, we don't need the pomp and circumstance, we need the facts. Once at the bottom line, we are the taxpayers in this city, and we deserve better. So let's make sure that when we're putting out information about people being anti or pro-education, we lay it all for what it is. Because guess what? There may be some issues with education that we don't all agree on, but that doesn't necessarily make you anti-education. And that goes for any other issue. Moving on, I would like to say this. Our teachers do deserve to be paid for what they do. I think they do wear multiple hats. And I've discussed this with the school system as well. I would say this, if city council does not approve a 2% raise for the teachers and staff of Portsmouth Public Schools, then the school system owns every bit of that to make sure they get that raise. Because as their direct employer, if it was me as a businessperson, I would do my due diligence to make sure they get the raise with or without city council. And that's just looking at for me because I know wholeheartedly that if these people are working directly for me, I'm going to make sure they get their raise one way or the other. And yes, it's going to take some maneuvering and some moving around, but we just can't say, oh, well, the city didn't give it to us, so we're not going to give, we're not going to give our teachers and staff a raise.
Sir, we've had our public hearing...
Right, I understand that.
You're a non-agenda speaker...
Right, I just wanted to make sure I made that point.
Okay, let's move on.
So with that being said, you know, we have to start looking at what we do here, do with education here in Portsmouth. You know, and I heard the idea of, you know, they're saying, oh, well, maybe we don't need the new middle school, maybe we do whatever the case might be, you know. However it falls, you know, we need to make sure our ducks are in the road. And just once we start looking at the city budget, we need to make sure it's prioritized for where it needs to be, the funding that needs to be there. Public safety is definitely an issue because guess what? If nobody has ever watched the documentary Flint Town, I would suggest you watch it to see how very much some of the decisions that our leadership makes in this city, if we're not making smart decisions, we could very well end up like a Flint, Michigan. And I don't think anybody in this city, nowhere in the 30 square miles, will want that. So it is my hope that city council and school board gets to come together, make some sound budgets to move this city forward. Because at the end of the day, we are in dire need of economic development here in this city. I would love, in my night job, in my part-time job, I would love to say, hey, you know, let's, let me bring my business from Hampton and put another one over here in Portsmouth. But I don't want to do that if our city leadership has to constantly battle with each other to make a sound financial judgment and to move the city forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bellamy? Ms. Bellamy? She's hard-spoken. Biddy Ashbury? And Clyde Haller? Robert Wilson? Yes, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening. I was here a couple of months ago talking. My name is Robert Wilson. I'm a business owner here in Portsmouth, and also I'm the president of USA Boxing here in Virginia. I spoke to the council a couple of months ago about the Junior Olympic Regionals coming to Portsmouth, June 1st through the 3rd, and I thank you for the support that you've given me up until this point. I just wanted to give you a flyer. It's going to be held at Norcom High School, June 1st through the 3rd. Everything's a green light. We're getting funding from our different organizations, so it should be a blast. And like I said, the big push is if we do a good job, the Olympic Training Center in Colorado, we're in good standing to have the actual Olympic qualifier here, and that's huge, the following year. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, this concludes our agenda, and this meeting is now adjourned.